This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Port Orford City Planning Commission to order. It's Tuesday, January 14th, 2024. It is 3:35 PM. I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner Boydston has let me know that he, due to a family situation, he is not able to attend today. Commissioner Lawton?
Here.
Commissioner Lovendall?
Present.
Commissioner Thielen is here. So there are three of us here. So we do have a quorum. Chair comments. I see here that Cory Ashower, who was a new member, has resigned. I don't know what the story is there. But we won't be having her on the commission today. If anybody is listening, we do need another member, so.
What section would that person represent for the city?
I beg your pardon?
What section of the city would we need to draw from for that position?
The whole city.
So anywhere in the city. And I believe none of us are living in the urban growth boundary, so it could include anyone in, within the urban growth boundary also.
Okay.
Good question.
I have someone approach.
Let them know.
Yes.
So anyone who is interested, there is an application form online, or they can come into the city and pick up an application form. And it'll be reviewed by us at the planning commission, and then by the city council. The city council actually appoints us on the commission. I see there's some... Okay, there's something here from our planner we will deal with later. Chair comments, other chair comments. I have no other chair comments. Oh, I would like to add to our agenda, under item seven, other business, item C, election of chair for 2025. So each year, the planning commission elects a chair. So that'll come up later in the meeting, under other business. The minutes from December 10th, 2024. Are there any comments or additions or corrections to the minutes that are in the agenda?
I'm good.
I've looked at them myself, and I see they look really, really great.
Thank you.
Yeah. If no comments, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
A motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Let's vote then. Commissioner Lovendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen is yes. So the minutes are approved. Public comments. Are there any... Is there anyone online? There's no one here in the room that would like to make a comment on any of the agenda items? Do we have anyone on?
Only Crystal online.
Crystal's the only person online? Okay. Thank you. Well, let's move on to planning matters then. The DLCD grant. Items for discussion, topics for discussion are highlighted in blue in the draft code. We have another wonderful printout here that Crystal has done. Crystal, would you like to walk us through this, or would you like me to?
Yes, I think it would be good to just walk through, and then when we come to a question or something, we should bring them up, because this is really our last planning commission opportunity before the public hearing in February. So let's just kind of go through and see what's on the different pages. I've put on some headers now that probably weren't on there before that kind of show the... where this is located better in the code than what they did before. So the first page is... You know, you already know all this stuff, I think, about the new stuff being in bold and the stuff that's already in the code being in just regular font. And that there's some backup in the italics where I make comments that I think might be helpful, which I hope to just leave in, because I think they're helpful to me when we have a lot of people asking questions and things like that. And that the numbering, of course, is all screwed up, and will continue to be that way until we have it printed as part of our code, is my understanding. And that everything's not included in here, just the things where we're involved in making changes in that section. So we'll just go through. First, we have the definitions on pages one, two, three, four, and five, and six, partly. And the ones with checkmarks were the ones where I just used language right out of the code, and I just wanted to keep it in there in case there was questions about that by somebody at the public hearings or something like that. There are other ones that come out of the code, but those are ones that were so specific that I just don't want to lose that that's where they came from. Okay, so I don't see any blue markings in that. So unless you guys have any questions about those, we'll just keep going on.
Crystal?
Yes.
I noticed that there was a Scrivener's error on page five.
Page five, okay.
To point this stuff out, that I see these things. Under prefabricated structure?
Yes.
The third line is to be holy.
Yeah, holy.
Holy or like...
H-O-L. How do you spell that? That's not the...
H-O-L-L-Y.
Just nail on that.
Okay, I'll take care of that. Thank you. Okay, page six. Then we start with the use zones. And the first one is the R1 zone. And we get to page seven, and we do have some questions for the planning commission deliberation. So the first one at the top, we had a question at the last meeting from Sarah, I believe, about the residential care facility, if we had to have that in the R1 zone. And we don't have to have it in the R1 zone. Please look at the... I mean, that is, that's not saying we should or shouldn't. Please look at the information that Joseph included in the packet, and you will see the laws. They're called ORS 197.660, special residences. And there's a couple pages. They... Yeah. And this defines where you have to have residential care facilities. And I wanted to... I wanted you to have it in front of you. But the thing is, if you have a residential care home, you have to have it wherever you have single-family dwellings. A residential care facility, which is larger, does not have to be in every single-family dwelling place. It has to be where there are multi-unit dwellings. It used to be multi-family, but we're trying to change our language there. So I would like you to discuss that. And then on the same page, we have a couple other things. Well, one other thing to discuss. When we were going through the the different proposals, Joseph and Greg and I, on the 17th of December, we came to this private stable thing, which has... That's number nine, under the outright permitted uses right now. But we're suggesting that it could maybe better go under conditional uses, because it's always been a problem for the staff. It's a permitted thing, but it doesn't seem to have parameters. And it can cause troubles for the neighbors if it's not done right. And we just think this is something that should be brought to the planning commission and let them set some parameters on it.
I think that's a good idea.
My suggestion is that we just discuss this page first.
Okay. Thank you, Crystal. So first, the item eight, residential... So we are on residential zone 1R. These are the listed uses, permitted outright. So as the handout shows us, there are two types of residential care operations. One is a small, up to five or up to six, up to five, which is kind of in-home situation. And then the residential care facility is six to 15, I believe, not including the staff. And we are required to have... Any zone that has single-family units is required to have residential homes. Zoning areas that are required, that have, that allow multifamily dwellings, which in our cases, R2 and 4C and 10MU, are required to have residential care facilities. But they're not required to be in residential, in R1 or 1R, in our case. So that's the distinction. It seemed to us, it seemed to me, that it's a business, it's a fairly large business that's, that may or may not be of a residential nature. So that was why we didn't want to make any decision. You know, we wanted the commission to make a decision on this. Yes, Commissioner Lovendall?
We do have residential care homes in our, in our R1. We have residential care. I don't believe in R1 that a residential care facility would be appropriate because of its size and its nature. And we have the opportunity to have them in R2, 10MU, and the other zones that have
Yeah, I agree.
residential facilities.
I agree too. So...
Okay, you will move that as a proposal to... Well, we won't even have it in there. It won't be a conditional use, because they don't want them as conditional uses. They don't want those facilities to go through that. They want them to go smoothly, and they want to be in charge, the state. So, I mean, that's my understanding.
Thank you, thank you. So we'll move on to the private stable, where building site is one acre or more, which is existing. And we had thought of moving it to the conditional use, because the private, as written, it has no... There's no way of knowing what conditions the animals would be.
No parameters on it.
No parameters. But if it was a conditional use, the planning commission then could state, okay, there needs to be this much room for them to move around. There needs to be this type of a covering for them, or those kinds of things. I'm not a horse person, but you would think that it would be fairly common, the kinds of things that would be humane for, to take care of animals. So we thought it should be here, we should be here for discussion and possible changing to conditional use for both the 1R and the 2R. Sorry?
Crystal's raising her hand.
Yes, Crystal?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Also, it doesn't say how many. And I think that's something the planning commission could well have input on, because it could depend on the neighborhood and, you know, the acreage and a lot of things that we don't even have any parameters on.
I agree, that's a good point. And also, they could provide a map of the usable area. Maybe it's all rocky, and there's no, you know, just because it's one acre doesn't mean that it's a good place.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, maybe we don't want them to put a barn right on the property line next to, you know. So we would have some discretion.
Yeah.
I think so.
Well, it sounds like we're in agreement on that too, Crystal. Let's see then. R2, so the next page would be 2R. And the private stable was the other, was the other issue in 2R, which would seem to be the same, same issue for me, because it's care of the animal.
And then there's a couple other things on that page.
Yeah.
Retirement facility was already in the code, in the 2R. And so we haven't really discussed that, whether you want to keep that in there. I think at one point, maybe somebody raised the question of why do we have that in there? And we have it in there, because it was in there. It wasn't in there as a separate use. It was with... Excuse me, my eye is getting something, you know, but it was with, you know, I think, I don't know if it was... I don't think it was healthcare. It's something that I probably have crossed out. But yeah, hospital-sanitarium-retirement home, it was number 10. But we changed, we changed hospital and sanitarium to... We changed hospital to healthcare facility. And then we changed, we crossed out sanitarium. It is kind of a retirement home of sorts. So I guess that's a question, what you want there.
And Crystal, I noticed, I made a note here that it's called a retire... So in 4C, it's a conditional use for a retirement home. Are we talking the same thing?
Yes. A retirement, a larger facility where people just go live. It could be anything from a, where they have a lot of care, to where they don't have very much care. But it's not one of those registered care facilities.
Okay.
It's a different.
So maybe retirement home is more appropriate for the...
Oh, retirement home or facility, whatever you want to call it, yeah. But I didn't know if you even wanted it there.
Oh.
In the, in the R2. Is that what you're saying, Crystal?
Yes.
Yeah, it might, you know, I don't know if we, a residential, a retirement facility is appropriate in the R2 zone. Might be. Depend on the size.
I mean, they're kind of, they're kind of quiet facilities, but they're big sometimes. Bigger, you know, they're bigger than a home.
Yeah, bigger than a home.
Well, we do have a healthcare facility. It occurs to me that we have a fairly large number of retired people here in town. And it could be something that we that we need at some point.
Have we?
And we have, we have made the code so that a lot of these things can be separate units. Like, over here, we have one called Inland Point. And it has a lot of little houses that people buy into. Now, we have another opportunity for little houses that could be like self-maintained. That would be, or maintained by somebody else. That, that could be the cottage dwellings. But they actually have retirement homes that have those with them, or they just set them up where the people can buy into a kind of a thing that has some kind of help for people if they need it.
Are they in the, what zone are they in? Are they in the, like, a commercial or mixed-use zone?
Well, most of them over here are just kind of in mixed-use zones of... Some of them are in, I mean, they're, I don't know if they're fully in the residential zones or on the edge, but, because they want, they want good streets and stuff too, you know, that where they're... They are commercial use, but they're also a residential use.
I don't see where we've defined retirement home or retirement facility. Have we defined those?
I doubt it. I don't think we had the definitions for a lot of those things. I will look in the code to see if we have that.
Joseph, give a comment.
I looked it up. It is defined in general provisions of chapter 17. So 1704030 definitions. A retirement home means a facility providing housing for retired persons, which may include provisions for dining, healthcare, recreation, et cetera.
So I think if nothing else, if we're going to refer to it in any of these sections, we should at least define it.
It's, we have that. That's what Joseph was reading.
It was our definition.
But where is it in here?
It's in 1704030.
Okay, all right.
In other defin... She didn't do all of the definitions.
I didn't see it here immediately. Thanks.
Yeah. It seems to me we're talking about the 2R zone, which does allow for multifamily dwelling, multi-unit dwellings. And the area is fairly close to 101 in the commercial district. I tend to think that it was not a bad idea.
I mean, if it's small, if it's, and they can't have too large a facility. I mean, you have the apartments on 12th Street in Arizona, and that's, you know, subsidized housing. But that could, I mean, let's say that could be a residential care facility in that size.
Well, we don't have, there's not that much room in town to build a huge
I know.
structure, in any case.
We're restricted anyway.
So what do we think? Do we say yes to a retirement facility?
In the 2R zone?
In the 2R, not 1R, 2R.
With a conditional use permit?
With a conditional use permit.
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Commissioner Lovendall?
Yes.
I think we're good, Crystal.
Okay. It could be separate from healthcare facility if we wanted to be a separate line. Probably shouldn't.
Do we want to call it the same in 2R as we do in 4C?
Yeah, what do we call it in 4?
In 4, we call it a retirement home.
Which do you like best?
I like home.
I like home. Small town, you know?
And remember, it could be, it could be a bunch of little cabin things too.
Yeah.
Because we, in the past, we said, we didn't call that one thing, but we have incorporated words that motels can do that and stuff like that.
Okay, so as long as, as long as that would be included as a home, that it could be separate cottages?
Well, I think we have definitions in the site plan that say that, you know, if they want it to be a facility, they have to have certain common features. They have to have, on the buildings, they have to have connections between the buildings. But they don't have to be in the same building.
Okay. Wonderful.
Okay, I'm looking for that one that you said was in R, a C, 4C.
Number 7.
Seven, there it is. Okay, retirement home. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, I guess. I'm just walking through it. I'm on page 11 now, 12.
So, Crystal, there was one other thing that we had noted on page nine, under B, number 15, where we talked about it at the meeting. The, it was vague. Wholesale trucking and storage establishment was vague. And so we decided, we suggested wholesale trucking or storage facility. So that's a, that's a...
That's a change that we were, we just made. Thank you for bringing that up.
If, if the commission's good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, and there's a a, an addition, at the bottom of page nine, in the italics, it's it says, "As a home occupation, subject," it should say, "to staff approval."
Home occupation. Where is that?
Number 15, the very bottom of the page.
The very last line on page nine.
Subject to staff approval. I know it's just a minor thing.
No, it's not minor. I'm trying to, I'm trying to find it, though. You, number 14 on page nine?
No, just look at page nine, the very last line, that starts with "and commercial zone."
Mine doesn't.
In yellow.
Start there. Oh, "and commercial zone."
Yeah.
Yes.
The residential and commercial zone as home occupation. So what are you saying?
Subject to staff approval. Adding the word...
This is just a note.
Yeah, I know it is.
But it should be to staff approval. Right, I'll take care of it.
Take up our time with stuff like that, but...
Yeah.
My, my eye sees it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't think there's anything on 10 that's new or where we had questions, except on 16, on, on page 11. We have that again, wholesale trucking or storage facility.
Oh, good.
That's what we said last time, right?
Yes.
Okay. Some of these have never been consistent in the code, and they maybe still won't be, but who knows? We'll try where we can get it. Okay, so I'm going to page 12, and I, I'm going to keep walking unless somebody says no.
Okay, Crystal?
Yes.
Hop, I noticed on the very top of the page, item five, it says government or nonprofit facility. That seems unique to me. I haven't seen that before anywhere else. If that's, is that...
Which page?
Was that another way of defining?
Well, it's like what, we're in the 5I. Yes, so, I mean, I don't know what you want to call it, but it's like, some of these facilities are run by nonprofits. I don't know how else to say that they might have a kind of a public...
Yeah, I'm just wondering for consistency, does that...
Yeah.
Does park, playground, fire station, library, or museum appear anywhere else? It seemed like it did.
Let's go back, well, we can go back and look.
I guess it doesn't.
Well, it probably is. Maybe we're not there yet.
Okay, well, if I see it, I'll bring it up.
I think we'll see it in the, in some of the... I'm surprised we don't have it in the 4C, don't we?
It's outright permitted in 4C.
Park, playground?
Park.
Oh, it's outright.
Yep, and then, and it's conditional use in the industrial zone, and outright permitted in the Battle Rock mixed-use zone, at least under our current code, not necessarily.
Right, I see that. No, I see that it is outright. I'm just wondering why we have a different language there.
So you, I think if, I like the word "public facility use."
Yeah.
That's in the, so pub, public or nonprofit, public use facility?
Public or nonprofit.
Do you like that better?
Public park, playground, fire station, library, or museum. Public park, playground, fire, library, system. I like, no, I like government, government or nonprofit facility. It's a technicality that I'm wondering about, that the language should be the same for...
We could make it the same in both, and I don't care which language it is.
I would honestly, I think, do both, do the government or nonprofit, and then in parentheses, i.e., park, playground.
Okay, so...
Like, give some examples, because...
Yeah, that would be good.
I like that.
Yeah. Otherwise, it's a little open-ended.
That gives some clarity to it.
Yeah.
Okay, say what you would like it to say.
So I think Joseph is saying to just name it, government or nonprofit facility, such as...
Yeah.
And enlist them. Or...
Put in parentheses, and then i.e., would, you know, as an example, is what that means.
Okay.
Playground, fire station, library, or museum.
So say the government or nonprofit facility, i.e.
The list.
The list.
Limited to those, but not limited to those?
Yeah.
It's not... Yeah, it's not. It's like we prob, I, we, I don't know if we should do an I E in here.
Okay.
Because they're all I Es. We already, um, the code already says. That if it's similar to or fits in with those kind of uses, that it could be allowed if it's not stated.
So just such as?
Yeah, such as.
I mean, I don't even know if we need a such as. I think government or nonprofit public use facility. Should give us some idea and then.
Okay.
Of course, this is outright, so, so, um, yeah, maybe, maybe it does need. Cause it's not coming for a, um, before the planning commission. It's coming for a site plan review.
Of putting some examples to it and that kind of.
Okay, so I'll just say.
Action of some.
Government or nonprofit use facility. And then I'll put in parentheses, playgrounds. What, what was some of the others? Park?
Park, playground, fire station, library or museum.
But a community building would work too.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, yeah, so these are just comma, you have them in commas. So you have done it actually. You're just putting the government or nonprofit facility last with a comma, which is what we're. We, so it's fine as it stands. I just, I just thought it would be nice to have conformity between the two zones, so that.
I think it would. So although they're not going to be reviewed the same, because the one that's an outright use goes for a site plan review. And the one that is a. Conditional use goes in front of the planning commission for a review.
Okay.
But I think, I still think it's okay to name them the same.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to put, I'm going to say, to say the same thing. In the, um, five, five I. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Wonderful.
What number was it in the five I?
Uh, five, number five. Under C, under conditional uses, number five.
Yeah, I think that, uh, reason that that needs to be a conditional use in the five I is that. Where, I mean, I, first I'm thinking like, why would we have it a conditional use in one and something else in the other one outright use? But part of it is the zone because the five I doesn't have a lot of room. And then it's got some industrial uses and there might be questions of whether that's the right place.
Yeah. Yeah.
Without conditions on it. Okay. So are you ready to go to?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, page, um, thirteen. Page fourteen. Okay, Battle Rock ten M U. I think most of this was done before, but. I, the uses were done before, but then we get to the standards on page fifteen and we do need to talk about it a little bit. So. The proposal here at the top of page fifteen, number fourteen. This previously said that any permitted, permitted use that exceeds six thousand square feet. Shall be subject to a site plan review to comply with the provision, provision set forth in chapter seventeen thirty-three, et cetera. Seventeen thirty-three was set up as a site plan review at one time. But it was never fully set up. We really didn't, because I did that, um, early on as a consultant. But I wasn't working for the planning commission. And then when consultants give cities something, especially small cities. Sometimes they just, uh, slam it in because that's what seems like the right thing to do. And it served us okay, but, um, not perfectly because. It, it probably needed to be, um. It needs to be worked in with what we're doing in the other sections. And the other sections now, we have that. Two thousand square foot building having site plan review. And so. These are out. And the two thousand one will show up later.
Yes.
So that it'll be consistent with the other zones. Because at the time, we didn't have any oversight with a lot of stuff in the other zones, no site plan reviews or anything. For instance, um, the Dollar General. Had no. Site plan review at all. We didn't have, I mean, it did, we did it on the staff, but I don't think it was. Based on a site plan review type thing. It was just based on what the city requires and different things. So now we have this site plan review and we'll get there soon. So are there any questions about that yet? Okay, as you go down the page, then we had this wording in here on number four. Wireless under conditional use permitted wireless telecommunications facility. With the building subject to height restriction of zone. They're not, that. That's not going to work. The. The national organization. Allows. Wireless tele, telecommunications and we don't get to say how high or low they are.
Yes.
So I would like to just take that out as I've done, but it's in blue.
Good idea.
Okay, then we get, we go on to the bottom and then we have the design standards with the Battle Rock ten M U. And you're going to see some changes here.
Crystal, can I just go back to that just for a minute? On the wireless telecommunications facility, we're talking about the towers, right? For cell phones, that type of thing?
Right.
Um. And that's controlled by the state?
No, national.
It's a national. So, um. The reason I'm questioning this ironically is that. A family member of mine just was concerned because pretty much in her backyard, suddenly in one of these wireless. Uh, poles went up. And it interfered with their TV reception and they never, were never told about this.
Now, was that a hearing in Port Orford?
No, that, she's in another state. But. By putting it in here, uh, is it kind of a notification that this is a possibility in those areas? So that people understand that, I mean, or, or otherwise, is it allowed anywhere? Are these things?
The wireless communication facilities, we have always done conditional uses for them. The only one that we have in Port Orford. Is up on, um. What's the name of it?
Coast Guard Hill.
Yeah, and, um. We can only. Do conditional use reviews when they expand the footprint. But we can't, we can't, um, in any way, control the height.
Or where? Can they be located in any of the zones?
No, they're located in this zone.
Just that one?
As far, let's see, Battle Rock. Yeah, because that, I guess that's where that, is that where that one is? In a Battle Rock zone?
No, it's in our, it's in one R.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think they're.
It's in one R.
They're, uh. I think they can put them wherever they want.
Well, let's go back to the one R and C.
If I'm not mistaken, that they are, the homeowner has an agreement with them, if I'm not mistaken, and they get.
Yeah.
Remuneration for it?
I don't know, and.
Yes, they do. My screen keeps going black. But then it comes back.
I don't see, I don't see it in, uh, one R. Oh, yeah, oh, here, no, no. Number seven, commercial communications transmitter or receiver antenna. So that, one R. Yeah. It's conditional use, but it's listed, so that it has to go in. They have to be able to do it. And they're.
But it is.
These ones that are in the ten M U. Um, were already listed in there with these conditions. With the, you know, then it explains them and we could go back and work with Joseph on. Seeing exactly what those conditions say.
That was just a red flag for me today when. This huge monster tower showed up in the back of her home. And she had, and that's a whole nother story, that she had no notification or anything like that. That's another story. Um, but.
We don't have them where they're outright uses anywhere, I don't think. That doesn't mean though that people can. Have much to say about some things.
True, true, but at least if it's mentioned in here, they know that it's possible that that can happen in that zone, correct?
Yes, so let me see what, um.
So I have, I found the, uh, conditional use. So the seventeen thirty-two oh five oh A and D. Um, A is setbacks, limitation to, uh, property and openings to buildings. The city may assure, require assurances to guarantee development in accordance with standards established and conditions imposed for any conditional use. And then specifically, communications transmitter, this is D, section D. Uh, communications transmitter, receiver antenna or tower, utility station, substation or wind generator. In any residential zone, all equipment stored shall be within, uh, in enclosed building. The use shall be fenced and provided with landscaping. The minimum lot size for a public utility facility may be waived. On finding by the planning commission that the waiver will not result in noise or other detrimental effect to adjacent property. Uh, as far as possible, transmission towers, poles, overhead wires, pumping stations and similar gear shall be located. Designed and installed as to minimize their conflict with scenic values.
And that's, what's?
And of course, we can't do that because we don't have any criteria for scenic values.
Seventeen thirty-two oh five oh A and D. So the, so those are the criteria that the planning commission uses. For the conditions. Against. The will of the.
Yeah.
Or wishing well of the government. I don't think anybody likes to see cell towers. Or want them in their neighborhood.
Yeah, it's, it was just the idea that even though it can be done period. By. These companies without necessarily having a specific zone for them. They can go in any zone. I just. Seems to me there might be some kind of a.
I don't think they can go in any zone in Port Orford.
There, but there were zones, the zones that they can't go in are the, um. Uh, the six C D, which is the, uh, concern development.
Right.
The marine activity, like the zones that, and the shoreline overlay zone. So there are the zones that. Like are defined so that there is no, basically no development in them.
Yeah.
Um, and they are only outright in the industrial. Everywhere else they're conditional, so your concern of the, you know. A tower going up with no notice, it can't happen in any other zone. Because they're conditional use, that means all neighbors would have to be notified before the public hearing for it.
But it doesn't need to be in our conditional use, uh, list. Well, there must be some reason why they put it in the conditional use permit in, um, two thousand six.
In ten M U? I think it was because of the, uh, uh, scenic end of town, probably. I would, I would guess.
I just have a hypothetical.
I mean, I don't know what, I mean, I don't know why they specifically allow it in that zone. As a conditional use, but they do, we do.
Yeah. Uh, maybe.
I don't recall the discussion. Yeah.
Maybe because it's, um, also a residential zone and it's.
Well, it might be because it has some, um. Promontories or something in it where they think people might want to go, or maybe there's been some there or something.
Yeah.
But you, but we can't do it subject to the height restrictions of the zone. That was all I was crossing out because I know we can't do that.
Right.
We can't even do that up there where it's off by itself. The one that we've processed a lot of times already.
The cell towers on Coast Guard Hill? Yeah.
Well, they're what?
They're on private property.
Yeah, I mean, everybody wants their cell phones, you know, but.
Nobody wants.
Towers, I suppose that's why they've done this.
Could, can we move on? All right, let's move on, Crystal.
Okay, page sixteen. Now we have, um. The design standards. That were at the top, um, these were in the site plan review, chapter seventeen thirty-three. But we still want them to be subject to that, but I think they best be in the Battle Rock zone. And so. Took that, took those design review features and they're back in the Battle Rock zone and they. Are pretty specific and, but then to have them reviewed, you go to the site plan review process. And if they're real simple, like, um. On a house or something like that, Joseph or I could do those in-house. They don't have to come before the planning commission, but if they are either a two thousand square foot building. When you get to the ten M U, you'll see that limitation. All the two thousand square foot buildings. Have to be reviewed by the planning commission. If they're larger than that. But all these, I didn't change anything in these wordings, except for the ones I took out.
Okay.
So on page seventeen, you have more of that. A couple changes. In names that we're using now, that we weren't using previously. Manufactured dwelling park. Instead of ma, um, manufactured home park. And then we get to page eighteen. And. So we, these were large structures in the ten M U. And so we want to put this back. Into the Battle Rock. And this F on page eighteen that starts with design features. There's a little bit of new wording there. About the two thousand square foot size. You'll probably want to read it. Or I can read it to you. So we took out. The bottom part, commercial and residential building, buildings shall incorporate the following design standards to. Promote the intent of the underlying zone. Any omission of the following standards must be supported with reasons why the standard is inapp, inapplicable. We took that out. We put in the stuff above it that says utilizing. We took that out, we put in the stuff above it that says utilizing processes and guidance outlined in chapter 33, Site Plan Review. "All new structures, excepting residential, single unit or duplex dwellings, having a footprint or combined footprints of one or more permitted structures that constitute a single permitted use exceeding 2,000 square feet, shall be subject to Site Plan Review under chapter 33. Site Plan Review shall be carried out by the planning commission to assure that the requirements in section F are addressed by the applicant." So we will get to those soon if we keep going.
Question?
Question, yes.
On E, it says the building should provide 50% of the ground floor facade facing the street with windows and buildings. And over on the, over on page 16, number two...
What page is this on, that you were just saying?
The one I just read was on 18, number E. But if you go back to page 16, two, 16, two, it just, it says, it's different. Does it need to be, I mean, I just... One says 50%, one says 25% with windows or buildings and entrances.
Could use your mic a little bit more.
Oh.
It's hard. Thank you.
So is there something that we should...
Is that, is that a problem, that they're not the same? Do we need to have them the same?
Well, this one refers to this one on page 16 refers to all new commercial structures, and you want them to have some features on them, and so you have 1A through O. And then you have a couple other things that they wanted everyone coming into the zone to follow, the off-street parking, the facade on the ground floor, so that it didn't look like residential. Then you go onto page 17, there's more of them.
Right.
Just some rules for all new structures that go into the Battle Rock zone. None of these are new requirements until you, well, they aren't. The only difference is the naming of manufactured home has changed to man, manufactured dwelling park, manufactured home park.
Joseph has...
And we get to these others, these are for the larger facilities.
Uh, Joseph had a comment.
So I think the difference is, on the one on page 16, it says specifically they have to face Highway 101, whereas on page 18, it says they have to face the street.
The street.
So the difference would be like if Crazy Norwegians was built today, because it's on the corner, but it's, its front side isn't the one that faces 101, it would need to have at least 25% of windows or entrances facing the highway specifically.
And this just, this calls for 50%?
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
More, more windows, the better.
I, as long as they're done right, with our crazy weather, yes.
Yes, as long as they're done.
Okay, I think, I think...
We haven't had too much, we haven't had too much chance to test these, because we haven't had a lot of new structures. So... You want to go on then, to 19? There's more of those. And I just put the whole rest of the Battle Rock requirements in there, even though we weren't changing them. So then we get to page 20. The natural hazard zone has been in the supplementary provisions, and it's always bothered me in there, it seems like it's, should be a standalone thing. It's not a supplementary provision, it's a provision for a whole section of properties. It's just a little different. But then we have on page 21, home occupation, stuff that we've gone through before. Ways to step it up a little bit, so that we have better record-keeping on home occupations, and so that people, when they register, it's not just as for a business license, Joseph would take them in and have them sign something, so that there's a record of how that came about.
Crystal?
I had a suggestion on this, on the 1716050 home occupation. For the purposes of, of informing the city council on what is going on here, that maybe a description, just a, one of your italic descriptions in yellow, explaining the reasons that the home occupations piece is getting beefed up, you know, for the, for the childcare of, you know, complying with state law and so forth, that we're going to be registering, registering. I think it would be helpful to, to get passage on this.
Okay, that's a good idea, and honestly, I've always thought our home occupation stuff was a little floating around there. Because we never seemed to know who had home occupations and who didn't. So maybe this will be useful to actually have a record of who we approve and who, what they say, and have them sign something.
Yeah.
Okay, page 22. More stuff that we've gone through. And more at the top of page 22 of how you can, you can I think it tells you how you can get rid of a home occupation if you, I mean, the process that might go on if certain things happen. Okay, then we have shortened the prefabricated structures, it was somewhere else, but we took most of it out, because a lot of it had to do with tie-downs and stuff, that the building codes now seem to have charge of that. And they didn't have at the time that the code was written. Then on page 23, we go into additional dwelling units. And I just wanted to say that I really hope that we can do this. I've been reading a lot of planning documentation that comes to me from the National Planning Association and the State Planning Association. And they're saying that ADUs are maybe sometimes about the only thing that is working for small cities, but I, as I told Greg today, small city to them might mean 100,000 or something, so we, they don't define small cities, they just say that they're working for small cities. I would think it's probably fifth, you know, anywhere under 100,000, but I just thought it was interesting, and maybe that these could be useful to us, too.
Joseph, you had a comment?
I'm looking through our ADU code, I seem to remember the planning commission discussing adding a restriction, the ADUs couldn't be used for short-term rentals, am I misremembering that, or did you?
No, that's right, it should be in here.
It's A, it's first thing. It is?
Oh.
It's prohibited from being advertised for a short-term rental, first sentence.
Okay, I missed that.
Good, okay.
And then I'd like to add to that, there's a, it says you need an ordinance number on, on, in A, BA. It's chapter 5, oh, it's 5.05 is, is where the...
5.05.
It's, that's the chapter for the, um, short-term rentals.
And I want to make sure with that, because I'm the person who answers questions that come in about this, if someone gets a, you know, home and then does an ADU on it, they can't live in the ADU and then rent out the home as the short-term rental. That would also be prohibited under this provision, right?
Yes, well... Well, I don't know if it's defined that way, but, but it should be.
Okay.
Should be, that's a good point.
Well, we have times to, to talk about it, I just wanted to know how to answer. I literally got a call about it today, and that's why I'm making sure to ask.
So would that be in the, in the short-term rental code, or would that be in here?
C, "An ADU is not permitted on an individual lot where more than one dwelling unit already exists through a permitted duplex grandfather dwelling or a violation." Oh, C, so more than one dwelling unit, oh, yeah. Oh, no, that wouldn't, that wouldn't do it.
Was this in an R1 zone?
It would be...
It would be every zone.
Yeah.
Every zone.
Just his question.
If I'm remembering right, the property he gave me was in the 10MU zone.
Do we have any restriction, we don't have any restrictions on short-term rentals in that zone?
No, other than...
That would be improper, improper use of an ADU, I suppose.
Yeah, and, and that's why I'm asking.
I don't know.
Looking at buying a property, he basically wants to know if he could do an ADU and then rent the house out, and I'm like, I didn't want to answer that one way or the other, other than say, we're currently looking at the code for that, so.
Good job.
Why, why would you not, why would, um, if they could have that house as an AD, as a short-term rental anyway, can they?
Uh, yes. It's a house that's currently operating as a short-term rental.
So if he, and he builds an ADU and he lives in it?
That might be, that might be an improvement to many of the short-term rentals, because you would have the owner living on the property.
The ADU...
Or you might make it a long-term rental.
Yeah, maybe.
But the ADU would, uh, would, it would have to have a maximum footprint of 600 square feet.
Yeah.
So if the house was over 600 square feet, it would not be able to be used as an ADU?
Am I, I'm saying if he, basically if he built another thing, and then lived in the thing that was under 600 square feet.
Oh.
And then rented the house out, or let's say it was a two or three-story building, and he, you know, sectioned off one of the stories, and then lived, you know, in the basement, and rented out the rest of the house.
Well, he can do that under the short-term rental code.
Okay.
As a homo, as a homestay.
Oh.
Although...
That's not a homestay.
Uh, no, that's not a homestay, because it's a separate dwelling unit.
I, I guess we're getting into, uh, it, I'm just looking...
This is a good question.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see where the planning commission lands on, you know, if someone buys a home and then builds a tiny house, can they live in the tiny house and then rent the home out? As an, as an AD?
They could do it as a long-term rental, I think, in any zone.
Yeah.
But the short-term rental...
Well, it seems like if he, if they can meet the requirements of a short-term rental on that property, and they have met, if they have met them, it seems like it would be a good thing to have another dwelling unit.
All right. Some people might want to just build an ADU and have it as a long-term rental, and then have a short-term rental, both on the same property. Is that an issue?
That's a good question. I don't think under our current code that it would be an issue, I think they'd be allowed to to do it.
ADUs, I have to go back.
I guess we should look at what would be the drawbacks.
I think the idea about ADUs was to be able to provide some long-term affordable housing. That was sort of in the background of my mind, was the, why we were allowing that in R1. So I don't know if this is a way that, if, so if you build an ADU and you live in it, and then you use the STR, you haven't, we haven't really provided that affordable housing to, which was the intent of ADUs.
No.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it sort of circumvents, there's always a way.
But doesn't it say that an ADU has to have a main residential unit?
We had talked about that, it, it's, it's not in here, I don't think.
I thought I saw something. Where could we put that in here? How would we, how would we state that, if we wanted that?
So are you suggesting that an ADU could only exist?
In addition to a main residential unit of some sort.
Would it need to be a homeowner, or would it just be a long-term, long-term habitation?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would, that would take care of Joseph's issue.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they both should be long-term, it shouldn't be a short-term and long-term, because they're just finding a way around our interest in developing more long-term housing. And so we want, we want the current long-term housing to stay as such, and an ADU just adds to that.
It's the nature of accessory. It's an accessory to a, to long-term housing.
Yes.
So I think that's, in, by the na, by the definition, and it's an accessory use, if you have an accessory building.
Yes.
It, it's, you have a main building, and then you have a shed, or a garage, or a boat cover.
So, Joseph, how would we add language that would clarify that, so you can answer that question accordingly?
So while we've been talking, I actually remembered we have something tangentially similar, uh, already in the STR code about recreational vehicles, so we could take that and modify it for ADUs and say, "No ADU shall be used as or in conjunction with a short-term rental."
On that property?
Yeah.
There are, there'd be no short-term rental on the property?
Or the reverse says the same thing. An ADU must...
Have a...
Permanent...
So you...
P.
That's good, no, no short-term rental. No AD, no ADU may be on a property with a short-term rental.
No, that's not true, that can't be true, because what if there's more than one unit on the property, and one is a short-term rental, one is a main unit, and then the ADU?
We don't have that.
No, there's no...
No, with three pieces.
No, that's, that wouldn't be allowed, but if...
You're saying this, this, um, Joseph said this, this, um, short-term rental, this house already exists as a short-term rental?
Mm-hmm.
So it would have to be converted to a permanent rental in order to get the ADU, but the ADU has to be permanent, too, you want both of them.
No.
Yeah.
An ADU...
We can, we can look at the code more. I think that my question was answered, and I just want to rephrase and get confirmation. Right now, the planning commission is leaning towards neither the primary building nor the ADU being allowed to be used for a short-term rental.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That answers my question, and we can find a way to make that...
Let's just say that.
Just put it in writing.
Put it in writing.
Okay.
We're here, this is...
Yeah, let's do it while we're here.
So say it again.
"No ADU or the primary dwelling associated with an ADU shall be used as a short-term rental." It was something along those lines. I hope that that, that's okay.
Go back to the recording.
Oh, I can go back to the report, after this, I can go back to the recording.
No ADU or the primary home, uh, associated.
Yeah.
An ADU must be associated with a primary home.
Or the primary home associated with it may be...
Must be an accessory to a primary dwelling.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would work, too.
That's the whole idea.
A, as a short-term rental. I'm sorry, Crystal, what'd you say?
An ADU must be accessory to a permanent, to a to a dwelling, to a, um, I don't know how I said it.
Primary residence.
Yeah, primary residence.
Primary dwelling.
I think, I think we need language in there that clarifies the short-term rental aspect.
Yeah.
We could, I mean, we could just add it to the short-term.
Yeah, we could.
Code outside of, you know, the grant and discussion. So we should, probably shouldn't talk about it that way, but we could just put it in the short-term rental code, no ADU.
Well, we're saying it right here, though. I, um, it's the ADU part of it that, I mean, we're dealing with the.
I think we could just say an ADU must be accessory to a, uh, primary residential dwelling or something similar to that.
Or a, a long, a long-term residential dwelling?
To a.
Because do we address whether the owner has to live there or, I don't, I don't think we should do that. I think.
We can't do that.
No, because, so, so we don't say, so we just say long-term.
Oh.
A long-term, uh, resident dwelling or something.
Uh, what if we switched this criteria A, instead of an ADU is prohibited from being advertised, promoted, or utilized as a short-term rental? What if we said an ADU is prohibited from being on the same lot as any building advertised, promoted, or utilized as a short-term rental structure?
Yeah.
What number are you on, Joseph?
Page 23BA.
Okay, I still. If, if there are three structures, or say there's two structures, one is the primary home and one is a rental existing. And they want to build an ADU. Why, there is a primary, um, residence there, correct? So that satisfies it. What's wrong with having an additional rental unit there?
As long as that primary dwelling is not used as a short-term rental.
Right.
And we, we probably need to clarify that.
Yeah, yeah, that's my only point.
And this would only apply to short-term rentals. You could still do long-term rentals.
Yes.
Yeah. So how did you say that? So you were, you were.
So page 23BA, uh, an ADU is permitted to serve as a long-term rental, uh, semicolon. An ADU is prohibited from, oh man, it slipped my mind. An ADU is prohibited from.
Being established?
Be, yeah, being established or built or something on any property being advertised, promoted, or utilized for a short-term rental. Or on any property that advertises, promotes, or utilizes itself as a short-term rental, something.
We, but we haven't put in there that an ADU must, um, I think Crystal said it earlier. Accompany a, what was it you called it, Crystal? It must be their.
Primary residential dwelling.
Primary residential dwelling. That's the most important thing to say, I think, is that we want the primary dwelling there, then an ADU.
Let's see right here. An ADU is not permitted on an individual lot where there is more than one dwelling. So you couldn't have.
Yeah, and why would we say that?
Because you don't want a bunch of ADUs going into a neighborhood.
Right.
Taking up parking and, I mean, we're, we're trying to give an allowance that is adding uses in the zone.
In the.
But how many uses can you add in the zone?
So we limited it.
And at a certain point, I also think that that wording is in there to prevent people from just doing, I'm doing an ADU and then an ADU, then an ADU. Instead of just saying, I'm building an apartment complex or a cottage cluster, sort of like why we don't allow the, um, the chain partitioning in place of subdivisions.
Right.
And where it says, it already exists through a permitted duplex, you mean? Not through a permitted duplex, it already exists as a permitted duplex, a grandfather dwelling. I, I, this isn't clear to me, the sentence is all.
Where are you?
Uh, C, B.C. An ADU is not permitted on an individual lot where more than one dwelling unit already exists. Do you mean such as a permitted duplex or a grandfather dwelling? Is that what this is saying? Already exists.
Think that that's what it's saying, is that you can't, if you have a duplex, you can't do an ADU. If it's already a duplex, you can't, you know, turn it into a triplex. Um, if you already have a grandfather dwelling use that.
Yeah, I would just reword it because that.
Well.
Already exists through a permitted duplex.
Assuming there are two dwellings on the property already, you can't make another one.
I, I understand that. It's just the wording that I think can be confusing is all.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I want to, I want to sort out this one where the.
As the result of, we could change, instead of through.
Yeah.
As the result of a permitted duplex, a grandfather dwelling use or a violation.
Okay, that makes more sense.
As a result of, instead of, uh, through.
Yeah.
Yeah, instead of where more than, exist as a permitted duplex, it just makes.
Thank you, Crystal.
An AD.
I like, I like how we talk about these details because it's always that the devil is in the details.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So what if we say, uh, it would say an ADU is permitted to serve as a long-term rental, period. An ADU must or may only uh, be established.
Accessory to a residential use.
Yes, be accessed, be, be.
Accessory.
Yeah, may only be established as an accessory, uh, an accessory used to a primary dwelling, to a.
Yeah.
As a, an accessory.
Used to, used to a permitted dwelling.
To a.
To a residential dwelling.
Residential, a long-term residential dwelling or, is that, is that a term of art?
I think, and it can be long-term rental or long-term as in ownership, either one?
I, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
I want to make sure, you, the planning commission thinks it's a good idea. Like if someone, going back to the example, this guy buys the home and then he builds the ADU, he could rent out both of them as long-term rentals.
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay, then yeah, that would be, um, good language.
The thing is, though, of course, that this would be hard, this will be hard to police. Once you have two houses on a lot and people are coming and going, it, it would be hard at some point to know whether the ADU became the primary residence and the other one became a, or other one, yeah, became a short-term rental.
Well, if they were, if they were to advertise, we would catch it because we do check the, the city checks the listings on, you know, verbo and all that stuff.
I mean, yeah, we have, we have short-term rentals in the city that are illegal.
And we have, trying to, and neighbors know, I mean, yeah, neighbors, I know what my neighbors are doing.
Yeah, it, it's a hard one. All we can do is make the rule.
Right.
And we follow it, right?
It sounds very innocent.
You don't make the rule, no.
As an accessory.
I think I kind of have what you're saying.
So, uh, again, so let's, I'm going to run it through. Uh, an ADU is permitted to serve as a long-term rental, period. An ADU may only be established as an accessory used to a long-term residential dwelling. Is that? Then, period. Then just keep continuing. Is prohibited from being advertised, promoted?
I hate to be devil's advocate on this, but I'm asking once again if the planning commission, so if the primary structure on a lot is a business or a shop, we wouldn't let them build a, an ADU and then live in there even if they're the person who primarily deals with the business?
No, it's a residence. It's.
Okay.
It's a.
It's a residence.
It's a residence.
It's a residence.
Okay.
Though in the 4C, you can build, in the 4C, you can have joint residences and businesses.
But not under ADU.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think so, no. An AD is an accessory dwelling unit. It's accessory to another dwelling.
To a residential use.
For residential use.
Okay.
That's, I mean, that's.
Otherwise, it would just be a dwelling on its own.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Good point.
Are we sure?
Point.
Okay, so, thank you. I, right.
Thank you. Are we there?
I think we are.
So.
Okay. So we'll see that language next time we meet.
We hope so.
Okay.
Okay, we're on page 24. No blue. 25 is PUD. We, we did that a long time ago. Doesn't mean it's right, but.
I've looked over it a couple of times.
28, then conditional use, and, um, we have some wording on page 29 that refers them to use the requirements of chapter 33 site plan review to make their site plan for a conditional use. We're not saying they shall, we're just saying that they should comply to some degree with that. It, they, in other words, they need to come with a good site plan. And we call those considerations anyway. We're not saying every site plan has to have everything because Joseph's going to be doing residential site plans and they're not going to have very many of those requirements. Most of them. Okay, then we have the uses, um, and so everything that's a outright use that, um, is of a commercial nature or something that's over 2,000 square feet is going to be required to do site plan review. And everything that is a residential use is going to be required, but it just doesn't come to the planning commission and Joseph is already doing it.
Yes.
But this just solidifies it, so, and it might give him some help if he has somebody who wants to know, what do you put in there? Why are you, you know, requiring this? So. Okay, so I'm just flipping through here. I'm on page 32. You guys had a question about number 13 on page 32. I don't know if we got that all resolved or not.
I think it was seemed, I think we did. I think we resolved it.
Okay. Okay, let's go to page, um, 33. Nothing new really that we haven't seen. 34, 35, words, words, words. 36, cottage cluster, it's something that could be done as a, as a, um, planned unit development.
Crystal, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, there was a, a Scrivener error I wanted to point out on page 34.
30 what?
34.
34.
At the bottom, page item G. The second sentence, parks shall be approved by state agencies having authority for RV park.
Water approvals.
No, no plural?
Yeah, good.
Sorry.
Oh, that's good. Okay, back to page 36, 37. Time limit on a conditional use approval. We talked about all that. Now we are at 38 and we go into site plan review, and this is some stuff that's been readjusted, so I think it's good to look at it. And see if you're in agreement. So we have the sections, you have their, um, sections named, but one of them I forgot to name. 1733070, the last one. The word should be applicant's site plan preparation.
Oh, 70?
On page 38, uh, right underneath chapter 1733, middle of the page. Then we have sections that we're addressing. And the, the last one is 1733070, applicant's site plan preparation. We're going to have to, um, you know, make a list of all the places where we need a fee schedule. I think we're, we need to ask the council for some time after they finish this before it goes into effect, so we can do that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to do that ahead because we're not even sure what they're going to be needing, but we'll, we'll know as soon as they approve it. So then, um, there's new language, the right of zoning. And this is just basically saying that, um, site plan review is to determine compliance with city requirements and not subject to a quasi-judicial hearing. I think you saw that last time. Then we have, um, page 39. Staff have responsibility for carrying out site plan review for single unit and duplex residential to include non-discretionary decisions. Planning commission review shall be carried out, subject to, and we've got the numbers. Site plan review by the planning commission may also be carried out, wait, site plan review, yeah, may also be carried out at the request of the applicant or staff. In other words, if there's some reason that it should go to the planning commission, it can. I mean, like, if they don't agree with Joseph or they're fighting him and it just goes on and on, he can just say, well, you can take it to the planning commission.
And it does go both ways because if there's something I don't feel comfortable approving, I can say, okay, we asked to take it to the planning commission.
And that's always the case anyway, but this just puts it into writing. Okay, and then planning commission review procedures, I think we went through last time.
I had a, I had a comment on, on, uh, A, on that section.
Yeah.
And I think, if we added the word structures, uh, uh, as I'm going to say, I think it'll be clearer for me to understand. A, the planning commission has responsibility for site plan review for all structures except single unit and duplex residential development structures where the development exceeds 2,000 square feet. I just recommend you add the word structures there again because I had to really think about what was going on.
I know. I really had trouble writing this. I couldn't figure out how to say all that and it became a long run-on sentence, but I did find a way to.
I tried to rearrange it too, but I, I couldn't. But if we add structures there.
Yeah.
It, but it sets off that, um, comma better.
Yeah.
I think, for me, anyway.
And then we are requiring a pre-application meeting with the applicant of some sort when they're going before the planning commission, just so that they know what's expected of them.
Yeah.
So this is just when the, when it's going before the planning commission. We don't want them to come and have something on a napkin. Okay, then, um, I don't know about this 40 days prior to, that's in C, provided by the applicant to the city 40 days prior to the scheduled planning commission meeting. But I guess the reason I thought this is because it might not be good enough to bring to you and I wanted to give them time to go back and fix it if they needed to. But I don't know. You know, I just, I just don't know. But 40 days seems. I just, I just don't know. But 40 days seems long, but I don't know what else to do. So you can think about it.
As, you know, staff, I definitely appreciate that, because then that gives me time to draft findings, if necessary. And I'd say the 40 days probably comes from if, you know, something comes in a week before our meeting, that's obviously not enough time for me to review it and draft findings and get it in the packet, so then 30 more days would be the 40 days.
And that counts weekend days.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a month and 10 days.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I suppose we could always speed it up if something was excellent, and but I think we need to have it in there.
So it shall be provided 40 days. Yeah, okay. Seems like it'd be okay, but, yeah, I don't know. But if you can speed it up, you can just tell them that. If you, if it's simple, cut and dried, you just do it. You just waive that.
Do we want to say for up to 40 days, so that there's some discretion there?
Well, I don't think. It, it's up to the, it's up, the discretion is at the city, city level, not their discretion, so I.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think, I think we protect our staff, and then they can, they can take it however they want.
Okay.
And now I'm thinking about it, the 40 day might also be in case we have to do some notice on it.
We do have to do notice.
And, yeah. Why then?
We don't have to do individual, we're not doing it where we have to do individual notices, because it's not quasi judicial. But we might have to do notice to some agencies and things like that to see what they. I mean, if you had a bigger use, the agencies might be involved. And they're going to have to go get utility clearances and stuff like that, and they probably won't come in with those, a lot of them. And the 40 days should give us time to send them out to get those kind of things. So, okay, then we go on to you know, it's going to be posted at three locations, and then.
Good.
Then they're going to come in, they're not, they're not going to be. We, we keep saying you're not making a decision, you're doing a review so that hopefully it can't be appealed as a, you know, you're doing a review to see if it meets the city's rules and the state's rules and everybody's rules.
All right, Joseph?
So I'm still looking at item D, and that's the site plan review will be posted at three locations. So I would, under that, I would actually post the site plan at those locations. Is that like a legal requirement? Because normally I wouldn't post the actual plans, I would just post notice of the meeting, and then people would be able to view the plans online or.
Okay, so let's say the Planning Commission's site plan review notice.
Okay, that's much, thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
What are you looking for?
Something.
Yeah, and then we'd say later, the postings shall make reference to the site plan, which will be posted on the city's website for public review seven days prior to the meeting.
Okay.
I probably just left out a word, I'm thinking.
Nope, thank you. That's why I wanted the clarification.
Yep. Okay, then, at the posted time and date of the meeting, the Planning Commission will take testimony from members of the public prior to the applicant's presentation of the site plan and Planning Commission deliberations. In other words, once you guys start deliberating, they don't have input anymore. Unless the chair wants to open it up to something somebody said. Okay, then we have the applicant's site plan presentation. You can look at that, but before you do, I want to go to this time period, wherever that was. We had a time period of how long that would be good, and I don't know where it went. We went through it last time. And we said 180 days, but that's why I gave you this. I had Joseph run off this sheet today. I saw where another town. This was on my listserv. And it's the one, it's an email that Joseph brought and handed to you. And these other towns are using site development review. Quite a few of them posted that they were doing that. I didn't question how they were doing it, because I would have gotten a lot of technical stuff, but I thought this was useful. And this was, it was kind of a different topic than what they were talking about. But they're saying that they give them more than 180 days, and I kind of have been thinking all along that maybe we need to give them a little bit more time because wherever we have that in here, I don't think they can, if they're doing a 2,000 square foot building, and then they're having a site plan review done by us, I don't know if they can get that up and going in 180 days, but I don't know where it went.
It's the last item in that section. It's labeled as G, but really it should be Z. Or it should be Y.
Right, yeah. Well, she's going to be due that, I think.
Yep.
Okay, where is it?
So if you go to page 41, it is.
Why?
The bottom.
Yeah.
Authorization of.
Oh, okay, we do have two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, after the date of approval.
I don't know why I thought it was 180 days. Okay, I guess we're okay. That, that kind of matches this, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Crystal, I had a comment on 1733-050, the, the very first part of it, at the bottom of page 39.
Page 39?
Bottom of page of 39, it says the applicant has response, this is, we talked about this last meeting. Applicant has responsibility for preparing a site plan, which may include more than one sheet to comply with the requirement. Site plan review for a Planning Commission decision. It's not.
A Planning Commission review.
Should we say review? So we just start that sentence with Planning Commission review or whatever, site plan review for a Planning Commission review.
Site plan review for planning.
Site.
Planning, should just say Planning Commission review, not site.
Planning Commission site plan review. Yeah, Planning Commission site plan review shall consider all the requirements.
Okay.
No, consider, yeah.
I'm kind of I think I'm done. That doesn't mean you're done. I mean, I think I'm done presenting, but.
Done with what?
I said, I think I've done presenting, but if you see things.
I had a question. Is, and it's on that same, the same one we just talked about, where it says an engineer or other qualified professional shall prepare and present the site plan.
What page is that on?
It says the page, very top of page 40. Where, where we just amended that sentence at the top, and then the next.
I mean, I think.
I, I'm sure there's cases where it is necessary. Should, should we require it for in all cases, or?
An engineer or another, well, I mean, some some people that are in different fields, like builders can do these.
Yeah.
A lot of them don't, but some of them maybe could, depending on. I, I just don't, I don't know. I don't, whatever, whatever you think. And I don't know if it has to be an engineer, or if an architect could do it.
Well, you're saying a qualified professional, so it, really, anybody who's getting paid. I mean, it could be a contractor. They, they can be a qualified professional. I mean, really.
So, yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't tell what a qualified professional is. We have to do that for the hazard zone, because you need a certain kind of a geologist.
Right.
Under state law, but I don't know that we care, or it might be a combination of people that put it together.
That's great. I just thought, I didn't want to be too restrictive, and in my mind, I was being restrictive, because I have a restrictive mind, but it really doesn't. I think, I think we're good with that. Do the commissioner, any of the commissioners have anything more to say about these proposals?
Just had a question. I'm 44 down for the bottom planned unit development. A.
Page 44?
There's a section that's highlighted or grayed. Is that for any reason?
Okay, yeah, I wondered why I have that highlighted. Let's see. This chapter, this is 1616, this is the subdivision ordinance. This chapter provides land development options on existing parcels and for subdivision and partitioning with or without cottage cluster development. This chapter. I suppose instead of saying that, we could say cottage cluster development may be included. Would that be better? Yeah. Yeah, I think that, that's a better way to phrase it. Because once a cottage cluster development went in with a planned unit development, they become like a plat. They have a status. A planned unit development is supposed to be marked on the assessor's records, and there's supposed to be a plat that goes to the county surveyor. And so the cottage cluster would be right on there as something specific.
Okay.
Well, I, I mean, we, the cottage cluster should be included if it's part of the development. Should we say cottage cluster shall be included if proposed as part of the development?
Is, is the definition of, is in the definition of cottage cluster or in our?
Well, it's just, it's just a group of housing that has a certain status.
I understand that, but when we talk about cottage cluster, is, it is.
It's a planned unit development.
It's making, planned unit development, it may even be not necessary to even say that, if it's, if it's in the cottage cluster development part.
Just leave it off?
Well, it seemed like it was included. I mean, it is.
Can be included. They don't have to do cottage cluster.
No.
They can do other kind of a subdivision or a partition using.
Subset of planned unit development.
Right.
So I don't know.
I'm going to try to reword it.
Whatever you think it should be is what I think.
I, I think I should say any approved cottage cluster development shall be be on the plat, be included on the included on the God, my lights just, my screen keeps going. I don't know. Does my, do I go in on and off black?
No, but we do.
Yeah, we do. That's an issue with the camera that I need.
Oh, okay. Any approved cottage cluster, cluster development shall be included on the planned unit development plat.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if it's called a plat, but I think it is for planned unit development. I can ask the assessor. I mean, not the assessor, the surveyor. But they probably don't know if they haven't been doing them. Okay, you guys, I'm feeling better about this.
Yay. I am too. We're almost done. Okay. Let's just move along. Discussion items, planning clearances approved since the last meeting.
None.
None. Chapter 1508010, setback requirements. So this is something that was brought up at a meeting, the meeting we had on December 17th by our city manager. Evidently, property owners that are disagreeing on their property line between their properties are hoping or asking the city to be involved to determine what the correct property line is. And so the request was, so this 1508 1010 basically says before you build anything, you have to have setbacks as per your property line. And the request was that there be some, that, that maybe we could give some guidance to the city. Maybe it wouldn't be in an, in an ordinance, maybe it would just be in, for their procedures. Something to tell people that, so that they know that the city's not going to get involved. The city doesn't get involved in deciding what a property line is. That's up to surveyors.
Well, that's what I would say is, it's based on a surveyed property.
It's pretty clear, but citizens come and they say, well, but, so I came up with a, just a sentence that we could, that the staff could say to people, this chapter in no way holds the city responsible for the determination of the accuracy of property lines.
Sure, because it does say, well, it's pretty clear here. The requirements are referenced to to two established corners by a registered land surveyor or located by a public survey crew.
Yeah. It seems clear to me, but the city manager was saying that people are pushing.
Yeah, and so that.
For something clearer.
If this will help the city.
Okay, so are we good with that, some?
Yeah, that sounds good. Just since we're still on the record, I would also like to clarify, in that section, it says it starts, or the sec, the sentence Commissioner Lovendal was referencing starts with, it is the land owner's responsibility to conform to the two corners designated by a registered surveyor.
Prior to building.
Yeah, prior to building, and that's the key thing, the land owner's responsibility.
So if, if, I mean, we can make a recommendation, and you guys can say, this is what the Planning Commission has helped to do, how, helped to define it. If you want to just informally do that.
Yeah.
So are we recommending that?
Certainly.
Yeah.
Yes, we're doing that. We need a vote? We don't need a vote? We're just.
I think by consensus, this recommendation can go to the, the city council.
Do you want to take it to the city council even?
Well, we'd have to in order to, well.
We're just making a recommendation.
By recommendation, we'll see where it goes on the staff side of things.
You may not need to, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, it's just language that you can use. I mean, it's pretty clear.
Yeah.
To me. Okay, I'm going to move on. Other business, city planner comments?
No.
No. Planning Commission comments? Planning commission comments. I thank everybody, Crystal, Rose Joseph, you guys showing up and doing this. This is not easy and you guys are in it. It's good. Item C.
Yes.
We have to elect a chair for this year, so every year we have to elect a chair. So who wants to be chair?
I'll move to nominate, can I make a motion?
You may make a motion.
I make a motion that we elect Greg Thielen to be the chair for two thousand. Twenty-five. Is that how we want to put it?
Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, any other nominations?
Nope.
Okay, we'll take a vote then. Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovendal?
Yes.
Commissioner Thielen is yes. Thank you for your trust.
You do such a good job.
And your, your support. Public consid, oh.
Real quick, don't we technically have to do the same thing with the secretary position?
Yeah, sure.
Right?
Yeah, that's, that's me. But it's good to.
I think we are supposed to elect a secretary also, yes.
Yeah.
Do we have a nomination for secretary?
I move that we nominate Joseph Harriman.
Harrison.
Harrison as our secretary for the planning commission.
Harriman, yeah.
Yeah, I am one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Lovendal?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen is yes. Congratulations, sir.
Thank, thank you for your trust and faith in my ability to.
Public consideration, do we have anybody online?
No one online.
Man, this feels so lonely.
It doesn't.
Hardly know what to do. So future meetings. February eleventh, we will have a hearing. Is it a hearing? No, it's a.
Yes.
A hearing?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. We'll have to be on our best behavior.
Oh, no.
At three thirty. I call this meeting over.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned at five twenty-six. Sorry. Took me to step on your toes.
Excuse me.
I'm just used to doing.
Yeah, I know. It's okay. It's all good.